Hey, Council President, hi. Did you check with the other council members that was available to attend today? Their work schedules?
What was that, Mr. Mayor?
Did you check with other councilmen to see if there was available to start at five? The number started at six.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mayor Sidnor, Council President James, and City Council members. I have raised my bid recommendation. I'm going to cover first, which is one of the first three states that can contribute projects like twenty-four dash zero zero one. There will never be a straight line as much. This project includes construction repairs, concrete sidewalks, pedestrian ramps, concrete curbing, pedestrian crossings with six lanes, and a range of roadblocks. We have all asphalt, airwork, and a complete reserving. Carroll Avenue from Seventh Street, East Riley, and US One towards the entire lane. And since the bid opening is due PM on April ten, the city received good bids from contractors. The bids received from one to hide from the walls. Superior Facility Management Services, one hundred and thirty-six thousand, three hundred and twenty-two dollars and cents. And Spina Paving, one hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty cents. E and R Services, two hundred thousand, four hundred and sixty-five dollars. Francis O'Day Company, two hundred and twenty-eight thousand, one hundred and seventy-four thousand dollars. Ross Contracting, two hundred and sixty-one thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars. And Metro Paving, two hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Funding for this project is provided from fiscal year twenty-four Capital Improvement Project, Carroll Avenue Improvement Fund. It's recommended that the mayor and city council, a Laurel or Worth subject, contract to Espina Paving Incorporated, who, ah, is a certified disadvantaged business enterprise, minority business enterprise, small business enterprise out of Woodbridge, Virginia, for their low bid of one hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty cents, with an additional ten percent contingency of nineteen thousand, eighty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents, for a total of two hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and fifty-seven dollars and thirty cents. Espina Paving has completed previous projects for the city, uh, over the past few years.
Thank you, Director. Are there any questions or comments from the council?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
Go ahead, Mr. Mills.
So, uh, Tim, on that, on that, um, uh, that company there that does the, um, pavement, is that just top, is that topping or is that base sand topping?
They will, they will, uh, install where we've determined that bases need to be reinstalled. You know, they will cut those areas out and repave them. Yes, and then the whole road, what we do is we mill the edges. So we mill four feet out from either side, and then add a completely new two-inch overlay, adjusting the manhole lids and everything that are in the center of the road.
Okay, and, and do they, do they provide testing?
No, we will, our, it's our own inspectors that are on the project. Okay, we, you know, we would have two of our, uh, inspectors available. So if there's any testing that needs to be done, they do test, uh, the asphalt, to make sure it's not cold when it arrives, and that it meets the required temperatures per state specifications or county specifications, yes.
Okay, and the, um, does that, does that, uh, asphalt come from the local asphalt company here?
Uh, it usually does, but they haven't determined, you know, as of yet, we will ask for all that information, who their asphalt supplier will be, who their concrete supplier will be, things of that nature, but we haven't gotten to that step yet, Councilman.
Got you, and the testing, the, the testing, not only the heat that I was talking about, but the core samples, uh, who?
We, we're, the city is capable of taking a core sample, yes. And we'll also do slump testing on the concrete, temperature testing, and air entrament testing on the concrete that's installed for any of the sidewalks or anything like that.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman Mills. Any additional questions or comments from the mayor and council? Hearing none, this bid recommendation will be placed on the agenda for the Monday, May thirteenth, Marin City Council meeting. Agenda item number three for tonight is ordinance number two thousand twenty-six, and ordinance adopting the General Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Pro- Program of the Marin City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July one, two thousand twenty-four, through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-five, and to levy property taxes and authorize the collection of such taxes. Uh, we will pick up on the agenda where we left off last meeting. We will have training and tuition, uh, from Ms. Lisa Woods.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President, Councilmembers, and Mayor Sidnor. I'm going to start off with the, um, health insurance. So the employee insurance budget starts on page PDF one nineteen, excuse me. Uh, the proposed FY twenty-five general operating budget includes funding for, to provide health, dental, and vision insurance to the employee and their families. The employee portion is twenty percent of the cost, and the city portion is eighty percent of the cost. This is the third year of the Cigna contract that secured a five percent increase on policy premium. Also included in this budget is the workers' compensation coverage. Moving on to the training and tuition, training and tuition budget starts on page PDF page one twenty-four. The proposed FY twenty-five general operating budget includes funding for, training was offered to the departments for, for employee for further succession planning and continued education for certifications. Uh, the tuition is a program under which employees may seek financial assistance for tuition for classes to further their job-related knowledge and skills and value of the city. This year, we have one employee from the city council office that has asked for three credits, two employees for the police department totaling sixteen credits, and two employees from Public Works that are requesting six credits. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woods. Are there any questions from the council? If so, we can go ahead and provide those in, in writing. Moving on, we will go to public safety. Laurel Police Department Chief Russ Hamel, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Sidnor, Council President Cole, and other honorable members of our city council. The budget details for the Department of Police begin on PDF page sixty-one, and the department's narrative starts on page fifty-five. Thank you for the time to discuss our proposed budget for the upcoming fiscal year. We understand that resources are limited and have kept that concern in mind during the formulation of our current budget request. We, we have reviewed our request and weighed what we need to keep our department moving forward as a well-trained police agency committed to twenty-first century policing practices and conducting constitutional policing in our daily activities, serving the Laurel communities. Within this budget, we continue to meet our contractual obligations and fully funding the collective bargain agreement with Fraternal Order of Police Lodge eleven, as well as our legal obligations, including enhancing transparency, safety, and accountability with our community through our Axon programs, our mental health assessments and enhancements, including the Cortico Shield Law Enforcement Wellness App for our employees, and in our background standards for hiring candidates, to name a few. We also continue to support our training and education initiatives. Our vast training programs include firearms, de-escalation techniques in nearly everything we do, and officer and community safety proficiency, executive development, continual professional education, and other courses of instruction. We also support our crime fighting and traffic safety responsibilities with funding for patrol and investigative efforts, community engagement activities. For example, our citizens academy, our advisory boards, shop with a cop, and numerous community meet and greets, for which we have been recently recognized by the Knights of Columbus, the, uh, PG Chapter of the NAACP, and the Local Chamber of Commerce. Our specialized unit supports included in this, including our emergency response team, Criminal Investigations Division, Community Action Team, our K nine and evidence technicians, as well as training and firearms, to name a few. Our administrative investigative responsibilities under new state laws, the review and rewriting of our departmental policy manual with Lexible, as well as training initiatives from them, and continuing to update and maintain our equipment so our officers have modern resources at their disposal, including their motor vehicles, their body worn cameras, tasers, investigative resources, evidence processing, ERT equipment, blue teams, and collision reconstruction. And of critical importance, continuing to support our recruitment and retention efforts. We have been conducting robust efforts in these areas while maintaining our standards to become a member of the Laurel Police Department. We believe our hiring incentive bonuses have greatly assisted us in this important area. As you can see, our equipment requests support our emergency response team, our K nine responsibilities, and our evidence collection and processing responsibilities. This equipment will assist our efforts to better serve our community and enhance our professional capabilities. Thank you for your time and consideration with this, and we remain available for any questions. I have Major Hamilton and Deputy Chief Plazinsky in the room with me, as, uh, Ms. Hyatt could not be here this evening due to a, a family emergency. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. In the interest of time, we have asked that all council members submit their questions in writing, um, so that we can get those responses back and share those, uh, later with the rest of the council. All council questions will be compiled and distributed to all council members. We will move on tonight. Uh, next on the agenda is Department of the Fire Marshal and Permit Services Director Danny Selby, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Cole, Mayor Sidnor, and City Council members. The Department of the Fire Marshal and Permit Services budget narrative starts on page sixty-three and in code page sixty-nine. The proposed FY twenty-twenty-five op- general operating budget includes funding for building and fire and life safety plan reviews that are critical towards the department's mission of protecting the life, health, safety, and welfare of the citizens, businesses, visitors, and properties in the city of Laurel. The properties meet this goal through the administration and enforcement of adopted fire, building, electrical, mechanical, energy, property maintenance code ordinances. The department provides and manages a wide range of permits and licenses needed to ensure that proper procedures, guidance, and requirements are met in the administration of the city's codes and ordinances. The department provides a high degree of internal and external customer service through the use of enforcement of multiple national standards in fire, life safety, building, electrical, and property codes. In addition to the construction inspection and property maintenance programs, the department will continue to provide for and approve the city's rental license program and the commercial fire and life safety inspection program in FYI twenty-twenty-five. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director. Next on tonight's agenda item is Department of Community Resource and Emergency Management, also known as CREM. Director Cornwell, you have the floor.
Thank you, and good evening, Council President, Councilmembers, and Mayor. The Department of Community Resources and Emergency Management budget starts on PDF page seventy-three and narrative forty-six. The proposed FY twenty-twenty-five general operating budget supports funding to three areas of the department. The depart, the Division of Emergency Management, which is budget three twenty-five, the Laurel Multi-Service Center, which is budget three twenty-six, and Laurel Helping Hands, which is budget five thirty. Together, these areas are made up of seven full-time employees and three auxiliary positions that work to build a safer, healthier, and stronger community to promote growth, resilience, and self-sufficiency. Uh, tonight, I'm going to go ahead and start with the Division of Emergency Management, which again is budget three twenty-five. So our critical services, um, include mitigation activities such as our community rating system, which helps educate the public and reduce impacts of flooding. Residents in a special flooding hazard area receive a fifteen percent discount on flood insurance based off of our classification in this program. Also, death disaster preparedness. This includes training and exercising city employees and stakeholders in developing and updating disaster plans, emergency operations center activations, and maintaining safety equipment such as our AEDs. Our response and recovery efforts includes, um, us maintaining a ready state of the city's emergency operations center, uh, the city's canteen, and supporting first responders as needed, and public outreach. These activities enhance the ability to educate resi- residents and businesses on emergency preparedness, response, and recovery efforts, and ways to mitigate potential, potential damage to life and property. Um, we will be doing some, um, equipment purchases to replace AEDs in the city. Um, next, moving on to the multi-service center budget, which is three twenty-six. Our critical services include, but are not limited to, short-term housing units, winter sheltering, a barber salon, food pantry, educational programs, job training, and clothing distribution. And then moving on to Laurel's Helping Hand, which is budget five thirty. Our critical services include, um, different types of counseling, which I'm going to explain. There's, um, a regular counseling, which offers individuals, adults, and youth therapy services to provide people with a wide range of mental health issues in one-to-one sessions. Our crisis intervi- intervention, which provides immediate emergency orientation services for adults, children, and their families who exhibit acute problems. Psychoeducational groups, which offers an educational approach to combine traditional psychotherapeutic technol- techniques with educational strategies. And then also our substance use assessment. This is a partnership between the Laurel Helping Hands and Prince George's County Public School System to provide alcohol and substance abuse assessment sessions for students who are suspended from school. Um, when we open up the multi-service center, Laurel Helping Hands will be moving over to that facility as well, and they'll be able to, uh, strengthen their partnership, uh, by, but being in that facility. And that concludes, uh, tonight's presentation from the Community or Resources and Emergency Management Department.
Thank you very much, Director. Next on the speaker list tonight is Public Works, Department of Public Works Director Miller, you have the floor.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Um, good evening, Mayor Sidnor, Council President Cole, and City Councilmembers. The Department of Public Works narrative starts on page seventy, and in-code budget starts on page eighty-one. The proposed fiscal year twenty-twenty-five general operating budget includes funding for automotive maintenance, body repair, vehicle maintenance, vehicle accessories, like lights for the Laurel Police Department and other miscellaneous supplies, diesel fuel, gasoline, and petrochemical dispensing, waste collection, refuge collection, services, disposal fees, and other items related to waste collection. Storm drains, dam maintenance, bridge maintenance. The Department of Public Works is responsible for the upkeep and maintenance of storm drains, gutters, dams, as well as three bridges throughout the city as a part of the storm water management, and is also a part of the storm water management team. Recycling, collection of recycled materials, paying of recycling fees, equipment maintenance, and other miscellaneous supplies. Bulk trash, the collection of mattresses, washers, dryers, and other large items. Highways and streets, which includes pothole patching, street repairs, construction reply, supplies, materials, and other miscellaneous equipment. Snow removal, snow plowing, out, other outside services if nee- as needed. Uh, equipment name maintenance, uh, the acquiring of salt, sand, and calcium supplies, brine application for pretreatment, and other miscellaneous supplies and equipment. Uh, street lighting, we pay the electric bill for the street lights and other maintenance required of those lights. Engineering and technical services. We oversee the three consulting engineering firms selected by the city in two thousand twenty. We also do miss utility ticket management and markings, equipment maintenance, and other miscellaneous supplies. DPW is also performing inspections of city projects, soil conservation, and land development projects throughout the city. We also currently assist the CREM on issues related to floodplain and perform reviews for the economic and community development office. Traffic engineering, engineering services, utility traffic signals and signal maintenance, line striping, maintaining school and street crossings, miscellaneous signposts, hardware, road maintenance supplies, and street neighborhood speed studies. We also do tree management, outside services that remove large trees, but primarily pruning of trees, equipment maintenance, mulch and topsoil of other trees along Main Street. Continuing programs include street sweeping for street safety and reducing pollutants to the waterways. Leaf collection, which includes the collection of leaves which are composted by the Maryland Environmental Service off-site after we pick them up, and they are made available to citizens in the spring as compost. The city of Laurel is also designated as a Tree City USA. Construction debris dumpsters. This program is for residents who are remodeling their homes and cannot wait for a special pickup date. Community debris dumpsters. This program is beneficial, especially to condominiums and large townhouse communities where we provide a dumpster for the day, uh, Saturday for a specific time, and residents are invited to utilize the dumpsters instead of, uh, it decreases our illegal dumping and bulky items appearing on the street. Uh, litter patrol. This program is a must to address the buildup of extreme amounts of littering throughout the city's roadways. Consequences of not having this program are damage to the reputation of the city, unclean city streets, and litter that ultimately ends up contributing to clogged storm drains and polluted waterways. Electronic recycling event. This program is great for residents who have unwanted electronics in their possession, and the consequences of not recycling this, of using this program would lead to trash co-mingling and improper disposable of recyclable electronics. Oil and antifreeze recycling. This program, along with our partner MES, accepts used oil and antifreeze from residents. A major equipment acquisition includes the purchase of toters and three salt spreaders this year. Uh, new programs and initiatives. Uh, this year, we will roll out composting for the city. Um, slowly rolling it out, but it will be mandatory by all residents by July first, two thousand twenty-five. And public surplus, the auctioning off of retired fleet vehicles and equipment, generating thousands and thousands of dollars for the city. Uh, critical projects, street projects which are currently out for bid include Park Avenue from Ninth to Philip Powers. Projects which are currently being engineered and surveyed include Compton Alley, Fourth Street from Main to Gorman, Fifth Street from Main to Montgomery, Virginia Manor Court, Morton Place, Stanley Place, a hydrodynamic separator that's for water quality for Irving Street, and the Van Duzen Dam Maintenance Project. Maintain the dam and riser along both sides of Van Duzen to meet Maryland's safety code requirements. Street projects to be started in FY twenty-one include Park Avenue from sixth to eighth, Lafayette Avenue from Main Street to Irving, First Street, Saratoga Avenue, and continuing the work on Van Duzen Road, which is in three phases. The project scope includes selected full-depth base asphalt repairs, sidewalks, curbs, gutters, guardrail repair, pedestrian signal and ramp upgrades. Continuing projects are traffic signalization, upgrades, and maintenance of the city's traffic signals, which may include cabinets, video detection equipment, control replacement, battery backup systems and installations. curb and gutter improvements. We continue to replace aging curb and gutter and extend the program into areas where curbs that do not exist. This is an annual program and usually done in conjunction with the sidewalk improvement projects. Bridge repairs. Prince George's County conducts bridge inspections and provides the city with inspection reports in Laurel. This project is for three of the bridges uh, in the city. Street repairs and safety, street and safety improvements. This project provides for unanticipated major street repairs or safety improvements on city streets such as speed hump installations. Sidewalk improvements, citywide sidewalk repairs to eliminate tripping hazard. This program plays a vital role in the structure of the street. We are in our second phase of, uh, projects throughout the city this year, and then street light enhancement. Continued upgrading of the existing streetlights to LED lights, adding to the sustainability of the city with lights that have a twenty-five-year life and use seventy-five percent less energy than a similar metal halide or high-pressure sodium light fixture. That concludes my budget for this year, Councilman Cole.
Thank you very much, Director. Moving on tonight, the largest area of the budget that we have.
Mr. Cole, could I, uh, uh, Councilmember Cole, could I, uh, just ask Tim one question, please, or a request for Tim?
Sure, we've been trying to submit those in writing, but I'll allow it for now.
Okay, uh, Tim, is there a possibility that you could forward what you just said to me and CC Sarah Green on that?
Absolutely.
I'd like to get a hard copy of that.
Sure.
That was very impressive. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeWalt. Moving on, our next agenda item is non-departmental capital improvement program. Uh, Director Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, good evening, everyone. Mayor Sidnor and council members. Um, I do want to just go backwards just for a quick second. Um, I think we'd be remiss, and I'm sorry I didn't get it on the schedule, but, um, we have budgeted on page one fifteen of the in-code pages. You'll see the city's pension contribution of two million, three hundred forty-nine thousand, five hundred thirty dollars. This amount is determined by our actuaries based on, um, the, the funds that are in the plans. Um, it is determined by them when they do their valuation, uh, at the end of the fiscal year. So this was based on FY twenty-twenty-three performance. So of the two million, three forty-nine, five thirty, uh, four hundred fifteen thousand, six hundred eighty-four dollars is for the employees' plan, and one million, nine thirty-three, eight forty-six is for the police plan. Um, and this was based on fifteen point seven percent of payroll. The other item I wanted to, um, touch on is in code page one hundred fifteen is where you have the debt service. And those are, I'm sorry, that's. And those are, I'm sorry, that's. Debt service, so we have two loans with P and C Bank um from previous CIPs. Uh, and as we discussed, as you reviewed and approved ordinance twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three um for the Legif program with the state of Maryland, um, we've budgeted for that debt service as well, and you'll see that on page one thirteen and one fourteen. Moving on to the CIP, um, as Mister DeWalt had requested of Mister Miller, uh, we're working on those edits to provide you that comprehensive information of all the CIP projects. Um, today, I believe you were provided with the spreadsheet just to break down into the four categories that we use. Um, special projects, facility projects, park projects, and infrastructure projects. Um, as you know, our fiscal years from July one to June thirty. Um, and for the operating budget, of course, that's that's straight ahead, um, straightforward. Um, but with the CIP, because of the nature of these capital projects that may take more than one year, we need uh as part of the ordinance, you'll see that funds are being requested to be reauthorized so that the projects can continue, um, and we can move forward. So the reauthorized fund request is twenty-five million, three hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred and eighty-two dollars. And again, these are projects that have been in the CIP. And as you'll recall from ordinances twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three um for the financing program that we're participating in, eight million, sixty-two thousand of that twenty-five million are those projects that have barely even gotten started, um, because we're paying for them with the financing funds, so um. But because when we did ordinance twenty twenty-two, we brought those projects and had to show them in the twenty twenty-four CIP. Now they are part of the reauthorization of funds. And then at the bottom of that spreadsheet, you received the four million, seven hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred four dollars. Those are the new funding requests. So it's three hundred and twenty thousand um for which a grant was was applied. Um, this would be a a garage-type facility with power, water, and temperature control um for vehicles, lab equipment, and evidence processing at the police department. There are state funds of three million dollars for the um Laurel Multi-Service Center. Uh, again, for the renovations to two oh four Fort Need Road. The stabilization of the dam ruins at the end of Main Street, these are state funds. Emergency rescue vehicle, also for the police department. Um, so this would be a a more uh reinforced vehicle that could be used during a an emergency incident or a natural disaster um to aid in in removing uh people from the scene. We've been um participating with Enterprise uh for the for leasing of the police vehicles, patrol vehicles, as well as unmarked. So this would be the FY twenty twenty-five leases. And we've been able to get uh between thirteen and sixteen vehicles. And FY twenty twenty-five would be our fourth set of vehicles, our fourth lease with Enterprise. But that contract will come before you once the um, once the budget is adopted, when the budget's adopted. And then the LPD technology for seventy-six thousand, um, that's, excuse me, those expenditures are for the outfitting of the vehicles um and technology that's in the vehicles, the police vehicles. So as I said, just the category that we um we call and and probably at this point in the near future, can break these down a little bit further into new categories, but special projects category um is the animal services infrastructure. In ordinance twenty nineteen, the city was the benefactor um for funding for animal toward the um toward a dog park um and for some other senior enhancements at some of our parks, which is in the park improvement program. Um, and for toward any uh animal shelter uh that the city may look to um provide. Uh, base map update, that's for our GIS system, and those funds allow us to update um the mapping information in GIS. Of course, we have the citywide radio system, um, as well as looking to provide um ham radios for our designated shelter facilities, as well as the um antenna that would go with that. We've funded in the past um the electric charging stations at our city facilities. So moving forward with that, um, emergency operations and communication upgrades, that allows us to upgrade computers and other technology in the EOC. Our environmental programs, um. So this project was started when we looked at um providing the one and done um refuse and recycling program, as well as the sustainability plan, the conversion of the Parks and Recreation um equipment to battery-operated, uh, so that project houses those types of initiatives. Facility surveys would be um if there's uh an issue with property line or an inquiry as to the use of property, uh, those would be those funds. Our fleet equipment, again, remembering that in ordinance twenty twenty-two, there's a million, eight hundred fifty thousand um for two years' worth of fleet replacements based on our replacement schedule, as well as the other funding that we've had in the project. Hazard mitigation, the larger part of that is for the conversion of our generators to natural gas. Um, there are grants that we're applying for to achieve that, but also in this in this project, we have uh purchased generators for uh some of our other facilities, like the Lake House, uh, the Gooty House, and the Parks and Recreation Maintenance Facility. The information technology program um includes hardware, network hardware replacement, fiber, building security items such as cameras um and phone system upgrade. We have a separate project now for the uh police department leased vehicles, um, and those are being funded with speed camera funds. The LPD technology, that was part of the um the bid that you recently approved for the complete replacement due to the windows upgrade of all the um police computers. So since that money is still in that project, um, that's why we have to show it on the reauthorization list. The master plan update, uh, it will be time to do the master plan here within the next year, so um those funds will allow us to um do what's necessary, do the the documents um and the other, any other outside service studies because it is a long-term document. That's why we're able to put it in the CIP. The record archiving digital processing project um started in the CIP to try to capture and preserve um some of our original documents and ordinances, especially those that, you know, were never available on on the computer. So that brings us to a total of our special projects of eleven million, four seventeen, eight seventy-seven. The facility projects, again, with your city HVAC system, that was part of the bond sale, the local government infrastructure financing program. The council chambers, that was adopted in the FY twenty twenty-four CIP uh for all the technology, all the um equipment as it relates to Laurel TV and um transmitting the meetings um as well as in room four. The energy um efficiency improvements, um, Mister Bailey and his team have worked to um transition the interior lighting in city facilities um to LED as well, uh, just like with Mister Miller and the streetlights. So we are um, we have done those. Facility security improvements. Uh, the seven seventy-seven is part of the reauthorization of funds that are uh for the renovation of two oh four Fort Need Road. Um, some final pool funding, and then major facility maintenance, and again, um, two hundred and eighty-five thousand of that was for some of the projects that'll be upcoming. Um, Mister Bailey was before you for the lake house improvements of the siding and the windows and the doors. Um, but there's also be the armory roof, the Gooty House roof, um, and some others' projects. So the facility reauthorizations total four point seven million dollars. And we have park projects, the dam ruins, uh, this is state money that we had already been allocated. Um, the memorials, uh, so this project was started, and the funds were um slated for all of the items in the Memorial Garden. The um park improvement program, uh, so this is the project where the um the new poles and lighting and notification system at the park and um as well as the the repaving and lighting improvements at the Stephen P. Turney complex. Um, as well as the Riverfront Park pedestrian bridges and um the athletic resurfacing of the athletic courts. And there was uh state funds as well as city matching funds included in the Riverfront Park Extension Funds. So the park project reauthorizations are two million, four hundred thirty-four thousand, nine eighty-seven. Um, Mister Miller covered the um infrastructure projects going on, so you'll see those as your next, the next section. And those are streets and the bridges. Uh, many of the streets are obviously the streets that were in ordinance twenty twenty-two that you authorized for the local government infrastructure program, um, as well as those that um that were part of the adopted twenty twenty-four budget uh but haven't been completed yet. So the infrastructure project reauthorization total six million, seven eighty-six, two forty-six. And that's all I have, Mister President. But we will get those um those details submitted to you about the projects.
Thank you very much, Director. Do you know when the details will be out? Is it gonna be later this week before our next council meeting on Monday?
Before the, before the meeting in the next couple days.
I appreciate that.
Yes.
Um, we've now reviewed the entire budget, w- well over four hundred pages. Um, I'm sure that there are still many more questions to come from the council, particularly on the capital improvement program budget. Um, once we get those details out, hopefully that clears up a lot of those, but continue to send your questions to the administration. Our next mayor and city council meeting will be held on Monday, May thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, at six PM virtually. I'll see everyone there. This meeting is adjourned.